For no reason, just goes down.
What is that?
That's true.
Yeah.
Basically, it's something. Always the machine that connects the people.
Podcast.
Go ahead. So that back end basically turns on the audio for the visual broadcast. It has the cable, the local cable channel. And Greg actually has his own little. Yeah, Greg can read the library and then they have to have some challenge as well. The word broadcast.
Got it.
I think it's electronics in this room. This is never properly. It's all been replaced for years. It's all been replaced.
It's okay, I can't get my internet torque in my house right now either. And I have AT&amp;T fiber, so I should be gold. My house is 1,000 square feet. I get 1,000 megabytes per second and they can't get the internet torque downstairs. Comcast couldn't do it either, which is how I ended up with AT&amp;T. It worked for two years and now for some reason.
More competition is what it is.
Yep.
Better services.
No Comcast?
No YouTube. I literally had them in here at 8:30 this morning.
So is it backup connected?
It's not nothing for money.
Can we livestream straight to Facebook?
But yeah, but how am I going to film it?
If nothing our control, we're not going to go for it. We tried, it didn't work.
I think if YouTube doesn't work, we could just do it on Facebook and that's good enough.
I know, but I Facebook, we used to do on Facebook through Zoom. There's no way for me to stream onto Facebook.
Someone would physically have to hold a phone and do it.
Got you.
Like I could do YouTube off my phone, but it'd be like we did it last time where it was just.
Where is that?
I should, I'll start, I'll bring my little phone stand that I use for live streaming stuff.
So is it, is it signal, is it signal? It's just not, is that?
So the comp, the, this came in, they came to fix today for the Comcast broadcast and we fixed this. But I don't know why it's not streaming to my YouTube feed away. So I don't know, they did something and disconnected the YouTube from streaming to it. But it's not connecting.
I mean.
And I have internet because the internet's working, I'm on YouTube.
It's not required, it's up and above. We do it because people like it.
It is not in our control.
On YouTube in the morning.
Greg's recording it.
Greg's got it in the morning.
Okay.
It's gonna have to be good enough.
And then I could probably share it off of your channel onto the.
Would you just put a Facebook post and just when you get like two seconds and just say that it's one of you just put it on Facebook that it's not working? The recording will be up in the morning.
And just let you guys know that we are on Comcast right now, so. All right, we can, we can start if you'd like and I can keep working on this YouTube as we go.
Okay. All right, I call this meeting of Phantom City Council to order. Today, today is Tuesday, December 13th, 2022, and it's 7:05. What the clerk calls the rule to do.
Uh, Councilman Rafai?
Present.
Councilman Jakowski?
Here.
Councilman Chaudry?
Present.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yeah, present.
Councilman Hassan?
Present.
Mr. Mayor? Present. We have four, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Hi ladies and gentlemen, United States of America, in this fair republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Community announcements. I have the, Mr. Chair, let's go.
I have a few of them, actually. The first one is, uh, this is from France, Society of Michigan, hosting a musical night on December 18th, which is Sunday. Uh, at 6:00 PM, the place is Al Shaheen Palace. It's located 4235 Tuama Road, Warren, Michigan, 48092. As the musical night, everyone is welcome to join us that night. The second one is, uh, this month is a victory month for Bangladesh. And we call it, we enjoy divorce, July, December 16th. And there is another organization hosting a homemade sweets. Everyone's going to bring homemade sweets and lots of sugars and all these things, you know, like a bakery from home. And that place gonna take at, uh, Khabab House, December 24th. Everybody knows Khabab House on Conan Street, you know, that's, uh, 11405 Conan Street, Hamtramck. The lastly, this third one, this is everyone, uh, council and the administration already received these invitations. This is from, uh, an organization, Shunam Gunt District Association of Michigan, will take place on Sunday, 25th, December 2022, at 5:00 PM, at the Gate of Columbus. This is their inauguration ceremony. So they're inviting you to join their newly elected president and secretary and organization. And that is December 25th. That's all from me.
Thank you. Thank you. Lynn, would you like to say your announcement?
Hello, Mayor and Council. Um, I just wanted to, um, update everyone that, um, one of the hats I wear is the chair for the Hamtramck Area Disaster Recovery Group. Um, we founded this with FEMA, um, last, around this time last year to work with everybody affected by last year's flooding. And, um, make sure that all, as many families are recovered as fully as possible. Um, cause I know a lot of people are still suffering. And, um, so we are in the process right now of looking for three more case managers. I emailed the job description to Mayor and Council. Um, it's also posted on the Hamtramck Area Disaster Recovery Group, um, social media page. Um, they're full-time, um, hourly grant-funded appointments. It would be around 12, um, months of, uh, work. And, um, so we're looking for three more case managers. Ideally, these, um, candidates would be multilingual or bilingual, so they can better meet, meet the needs of all of our residents. Um, and then kind of paired with that, uh, there's this flyer too. And, um, this is for anybody who is affected by the flooding and still suffering to, um, reach out directly for service. Our case managers will be, have lists of names to begin initiating contact. But if anybody's really struggling, they can also reach out, um, and get, uh, on the list and start, um, opening up their cases and getting work, um, to help recover. So I just wanted to let the community know, um, that we're making progress there and we are hiring. Um, so if you know anybody that, um, has disaster case management experience or case management experience, um, please encourage them to apply and circulate the posting.
Thank you.
Um, as a reminder, um, tomorrow is both the Hamtramck Mutual Aid and the Midtown C-37 Block Club meetings, the monthly meetings. And, um, one of the programs that Hamtramck Mutual Aid is facilitating right now is that snow shoveling pairing. So if you know anyone who would be willing to pick up an extra house or two to shovel in the winter for seniors or disabled people in the city, that would be great. You can have them reach out to me. Lynn knows how to get the link and the link has been going around. There's flyers going around Facebook and stuff with the QR code, but if you're having trouble finding it, let me know. Um, organizations that provide three or more volunteers from their organization are being cross-listed as co-sponsors for the program this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any more announcements? All right, we will move to the Proclamations, Recognizations, and Presentations. And the first one is Common Word Alliance presenting the Interfaith Community Service Award to me.
Good evening, sir alayhi. Mayor, councilmembers, manager, attorney, our clerk, and police chief, and audience. Amin Amari Fuss, founder and president of Common Word Alliance, Project Interfaith International, and we held, uh, the 12th anniversary, uh, at the Islamic House of Wisdom in Dearborn. And I appreciate, uh, Mayor, Amir Galib for, uh, attending our event. And I thank him on behalf of both governing teams at Common Word Alliance and Minister's which are the same community for his support to our community activities. So I will present you this award.
Do you want to come around, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Common Word Alliance, Project Interfaith International, and Minister's which are the same community. Uh, present you Interfaith Community Service Award, the Common Word Alliance, Project Interfaith International Award. This certificate of appreciation to Dr. Amir Galib, Mayor of City of Hamtramck, for his support to education through interfaith dialogue and development of culturally diversified community in Detroit, State of Michigan, USA, and around the world. This award has been issued by the Executive Board of Common Word Alliance on its 12th anniversary, 23rd day of November, 2022, City of Detroit, County of Wayne, State of Michigan, signed by my name, Imam Amari Fuss, President of the Federation. And thank you, Mayor, for the important support and, uh, for the, uh, for the, uh, for the, uh.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, excuse me, Mayor. I forgot to say I apologize, uh, to you and to Congresswoman, uh, Debbie Dino. She also issued certificates according to our award that we present to you. So you can take the picture.
One, two. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You can put this in this bag. Thank you all. Now, let's take the next one.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is, uh, presentation from Wayne Metro Utility and Water Assistance Available to Hamtramck residents.
Mr. Mayor, we have representatives from Wayne Metro here. Uh, if you guys want to come up to the podium, uh, we also have a PowerPoint that they provided that, uh, Ben Clerk is going to put up on the screen for us.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Hiba Hidous. I am the Community Engagement Outreach Manager at Wayne Metro Community Action Agency.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Carson. I am the Department Director for Community Engagement at Wayne Metro.
All right, I apologize for my shortness and if I can't see your face clearly. Should have wore higher heels. Would you like this started?
Uh, one moment.
Okay.
If you want to get started, well, she's, you know, she can bring it up as we're going.
Hiba, what's your last name? I know it came from your email.
Haidous, H-A-I-D-O-U-S.
Okay.
All right, so we appreciate you guys having us today. Um, we wanted to spread awareness of what Wayne Metro does in the community of Hamtramck and all across Wayne County. So I want to start by saying Wayne Metro was founded in 1971. We service the low to moderate income residents throughout Wayne County. Um, we are receiving over 130,000 calls a year in requests from individuals. We service 43 municipalities and townships and we have over 75 programs. Some of the very important programs are, are, include Water Residential Assistance Program, the Michigan Energy Assistance Program, the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. We have Head Start programs. We provide property tax and income tax assistance. We have over 20 sites, 21 sites in Wayne County and we have Head Start locations as well.
Am I following along with you or are you telling?
Yeah, you can go to the next slide. I can actually see it's all about it. All right, so Wayne Metro, um, our first line of contact is our Connect Center. We are really client-focused, so we try to streamline the easiest process for clients to get into our services. Um, so clients can give us a call by 313-388-9799. Visit our website at www.wainemetro.org or email wainemetroconnectcenter@wainemetro.org. We have a live chat, um, that we have specialists answering questions. Um, we also how to apply for our services. So when the pandemic happened, we had to launch a easy way for clients to service our service, to provide our services. So we launched something called Gateway. It's an application, basically it's a one-stop shop where clients can receive all assistance. Um, we also are very client-centered, where we try to minimize all of, all of the required documents for clients. So we ask for photo ID, um, utility and water bills. We ask for income, um, and we ask for any assistance that they're receiving from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
And if I could add to that, um, so clients don't have to have an appointment, they can walk into any one of our offices if they're not technology savvy or if they need assistance with filling out the applications and we'll help them collect the documents as well.
Yep, and also we have specialists that speak several languages. Um, so we are centered, we have Arabic clients, we have Arabic specialists, Spanish-speaking Bengali, French. Um, we also have a line that will connect clients to translators. So our first program is the Water Residential Assistance Program. This is funded by the Great Lakes Water Authority. Um, this helps clients with low-income families. It's a two-year program that helps residents assist with water bills, water conservations, and self-sufficiency initiatives. Um, the benefits of this is clients can get up to $100 in credits a month. They can also receive up to $1,200 in past due balances. What the cool part about this is, you don't have to even have a past due to enroll into this program. Um, if you just want to receive those credits, we look at your monthly bills, we look at how much you're making each month, and we calculate how much assistance and credits you can receive on your bill. This is very client-centered. They actually went through a recent program design change, which now it's referred to RAPIBP. Um, with that, we are trying to remove those burdens on clients and making sure that everybody has that equal access. So all municipalities and communities have the access to this program. Um, it is a two-year program and it has supportive wraparound services. So we keep up with case management. This is target to making sure that clients are keeping up with their payments. It's allowing clients to know how much mo, each month they're, they have to pay in their water bill. Um, and also has a home and water audit and minor plumbing repairs up to $2,000. Next slide.
Yep, there you go. That's it.
Yep. So the water eligibility, we follow a federal poverty level. So a family has to be at a 200% federal poverty level or below. Um, so what that means is a family of four can be receiving up to $53,000 or less to qualify for these services. Household income is not, um, required, but it's recommended. And why we say it's recommended is because we want clients to sustain those monthly bills every time they come out. Um, also you have to be responsible for the water bill. So if you are a renter, you have to provide us the lease, um, just saying that you are responsible for that water bill each month. And then I always stress that we help residents and not businesses. So also, um, next slide, please. This is our Water Residential Assistance Program flyer. Um, again, this is very client-focused, it has our QR codes. Um, it shows all of the areas that we are assisting in Wayne County and different counties. And it also has the federal poverty level of how much it has, how much a family is required to have income each month, depending on how many people are in their household. This is the second component, which is the conservation and home assessment. Um, so again, we assess those client bills. So if we realize there's only two people in the household, but they're paying about $300 each month, there's something going on in the household. And if we can help with the bad balance, it doesn't really, you know, it doesn't really help with the future balances because they're going to continue with those high bills. Next slide. So what we have is we have a conservation team. So we put them on our conversation, our conservation list. We make appointments for these clients and we assess what is going on in the home. So we look for if they have a leaky faucet, we look if their shower head is running, we look if their toilet is running. And we will fix those minor plumbing repairs up to $2,000 for them. Lastly, last thing I want to mention about this program is I did say that it's a two-year program, but it's also open for rapidity. So what that means is that we can extend the two years as long as there's a 60, 62 years or older in the household, so a senior citizen that's 62 years or older, or there's somebody disabled in the household. We can continue this funding but beyond the two years. The Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. This is another water assistance that was launched during COVID. Um, this assistance Jasmine ends in, um, uh, July 23rd. Yep. So with that, there was actually just a, a program design change recently where we have help with past dues up to $1,500. This program is just allocated for clients that have the past due balance. So the other program was for credits and past due. This one is past due balances up to 1,500.
Is it the same income eligibility?
This is the same income eligibility. So also they have, this is the, they have restoration and discontinued services. So if they're on discontinued statuses, we are allowed to restore their water for them. Next one, please. And I apologize, it's at 150% federal poverty level. So the income is different, but the, um, the flyer for that will identify what that means for 150%. Oh, um, and that's the pro, that's, can I go back just one slide? Thank you. So a past due is required, no household income is required, ID is required for all household members age of 18 and older. And then the client again must be responsible for that water bill. Then here is our flyer with our QR code, our phone number, and our website, how you can access this service. And now that I talked about the two water programs, when I refer to the wraparound services, clients are allowed to enroll in both programs. So they can get the maximum assistance in their water bills if needed. This one is the Michigan Energy Assistance Program. Can you put back one slide? Which is referred to as MEET. Um, this is energy assistance for the low-income households, so they can reach energy, um, self-sufficiency. A household that qualifies for the state emergency relief for heat and non-heat electricity services also qualifies for additional energy services from MEET through agencies like, um, that has received the Michigan, that received assistance from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. So clients need to apply for that state emergency relief through MDHS. When they get approval for that, they come to us and we can apply for those MEET funds. A client does have to be either in shut-off notice or past due notice. We will help up to $2,500 in back and back balances on their utility bills. If they want another plan, we can put them on a plan called LSP. So LSP is a program that allows clients to know what their exact monthly bills are going to require. So it's either $90 a month they get approved for or $130 a month, depending on their consumption. So they have either the direct services or we put them in a, uh, program that they know what they're paying each month.
And if clients do need assistance filling out that SCR, because we know that that can be a little challenging, we have navigators available that can walk them through that. So everyone in, in our agency are certified navigators.
Right, and that's part of the case management services that they receive as well. The MEET eligibility is at 150% federal, federal poverty level. Um, the determination does come from MDHS first with that approved SCR and then they can come to us. Um, and S, the SCR also, MDHS releases their funds after, um, they get approved. But they have to fulfill their copayment first. So if MDHS covers, it's about $850 on their gas and they will cover another $850 on their lights. And this is our last slide that I want to stress again. This is how clients access all of our services. We have that online application and if clients cannot access the online application or don't know how to upload those documents, we are here to help. We have navigators that are working around the clock, um, that will take appointments, um, and will help clients fill out the application and give them several ways to, um, to hand, to hand in their documents. So our offices are open from Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 5:00. And Saturday, we are, um, and our Connect Center hours are open from 8 o'clock to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 9 to 12 on Saturday. Um, clients have the access to walk in, to make appointments, or to give us a call. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, uh, thank you so much for being here and, uh, giving us these illustrations and this is very, uh, great informations and helpful. Uh, would you be able to just to come in, come out on Friday at the prayer time or during, before the prayer time to pass out a flyers, you know, so this will.
Absolutely.
This Friday?
This Friday or any Friday.
Or any Friday, okay.
Every Fridays, we gather at the mosque, you know, many people gather to, for the prayer. And if, if they get those informations, they will benefit from it.
Absolutely.
Give the location for Tony Moss, if they can, if they don't.
Right, and lastly, I want to mention, our flyers are translated as well.
Yeah.
So, which is really, really good, because I know that we're in a community, um, that's really diverse.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman, we also have those flyers down, downstairs in the DPW, uh, for people to pick up. And also, when I visit the mosques routinely, I also pass them out along.
Yes.
I also brought all the flyers.
If I could be assistance with that during the Friday prayers, you know, let me know.
Okay.
I'll be glad to help you guys out to navigate through the city.
Thank you.
To this mosque.
I appreciate it. And we appreciate you calling on Wayne Metro to be here to present for this community.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to the additions, additions, agenda approval. Do you have any additions or additions?
Mayor, uh, we need to add the resolution. I need to make a resolution for the new mayor pro temp at the new business.
So I, I did a little bit of research on that. Max just told me that that was going to be brought up. Uh, basically, the mayor pro temp is elected and if you want to replace the mayor pro temp, you can do so for a specific meeting. So if you were to replace him for today's meeting, and that's only done if he's not following the will of the people. So basically, if there was a vote for some reason and he didn't follow the vote, you can replace him in order to have, uh, whatever you're trying to accomplish, accomplished. But that would be specifically for that day, he would take back his position at the next meeting. So basically, because he's elected, you can't just remove him. Uh, unless it was for misconduct and there's a very specific method to do so in that, in that sense, and it would take.
When we make, uh, when we make him the mayor pro temp, what do you make for one year's?
Uh, it's, uh, the charter basically says, one second, I'll tell you. Just so it's on. I mean, according to Roberts rules, it's not, it's not the way it goes. And then, hold on one moment. Oh yeah, here we go. Uh, the mayor pro temp shall be the councilperson who is selected, uh, by the council at their first regular meeting after the effective date of taking office following a general election. So, um, that's how it's picked. The first, uh, day, uh, meeting after the general election.
So next year.
So next year, after the general election, you can replace him.
If you have the resolution, you can.
It's not by resolution. You'd have to provide, you'd have to go through a process, um, proving misconduct, not proving misconduct, maybe alleging misconduct. And also, uh, if there were to be a motion on this, there can't be discussion, it would just be a vote.
I think the last time it happened was for misconduct, for mistake. Is that correct?
Yes.
I think that was last council.
Yep. Last council, Ian Verkan.
Okay.
All right, then we'll move to the public input.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start with a couple email, public comments.
I'm going to start with a couple email public comments. First one, just a heads up, we did take care of this, but I promised I'd still read it at the city council meeting. So this is from Nawal Al-Masmeri. Good evening. Attaches a request from Dickinson East employees and DE parents and residents requesting that a crosswalk be placed in front of the school on the Edwin side of the building to make it safe for our students. With a designated area for crossing, it will be safer for our students to cross. Last week, a second grader almost got hit by a car backing up while they were crossing. This is just one of the many misses that could be avoided with this designated crosswalk for all. As residents and teachers in Hamtramck Public Schools, we are requesting this crosswalk for public safety. And attached, I do have signatures of the teachers and principals at this school. Max, and I believe the chief and Bill have already communicated to her that they're in the process of doing that. So like I said, this has already been taken care of. Next one is from Sarah Tyrion. Hi, this is in regards to the proposed animal sacrifice language. I've spoken before the council about this issue, and I still think the language as written needs to be revised. The language I see an issue with is, in parentheses, any and all actions necessary to restrict the act of sacrifice from public viewing must be taken without exception. If I cannot see the animal sacrifice, who is to say I won't be able to hear it and know that it is going on? The homes we occupy are close together. I can hear my neighbors practicing instruments, talking on the phone, and any number of things which take place on a daily basis. I certainly don't think this will preclude a sacrifice of a cow, sheep, or goat. I also do not have faith that community members will actually get the correct permits and pay fines associated with animal sacrifice. The cleaning and sanitation will go by the wayside as well. Walk down any street in Hamtramck and you can see litter, debris, uneaten food, discarded masks, et cetera, on the, on the ground. What makes you think that this ordinance will ensure the sanitation of blood and trails, feces, and other bodily fluids will be disposed of properly? The thought of walking down my block and encountering any sort of carnage that might be left over from a sacrifice is absolutely terrifying. This is something that needs to be left to professionals for the health of our community. I have been a good resident to this community for 10 years. I've helped run the recycling program, volunteered for clean sweeps, organized events for interfaith prayers, and worked the polls at election time. I have even considered running for office, but I don't think anything I do makes a real impact. I think my efforts would be appreciated elsewhere. And that was Sarah Tyrion. And that is all for the emails. Next I have Lynn Blazi, Poland, Street, Hamtramck resident, welcome.
Hello, I'm Mayor and Council. Regarding Resolution 2022-150, the meeting schedule for next year. I was just looking at our annual calendar and noticed the overlap between Ramadan and the meeting schedule. And I'm curious whether the meetings on March 22nd and April 12th will be adjusted to an earlier time as we have in the past. I'm not sure if this is a conflict, but Idaletha is June 29th. I'm not sure if that would affect our meeting on June 28th. And it also appears as though the primaries will be August 8th, which is a scheduled meeting day. So I just wanted to bring those potential conflicts to your attention and encourage adjusting the whole calendar now to make it easier for the community to plan, for council to plan ahead. Regarding Resolution 2022-153, I just want to say congratulations to Muhit. 2022-155 and 156. Just a general comment regarding the high turnover in City Hall. I'm curious what's being done to improve the work environment, to support our existing staff, and to attract qualified applicants that are willing to stay. I know it's a very loaded question, but it's just, you know, something worth, worth thinking about. 2022-157, the alley project. Given the nature of the changing of the alley, I fully agree with the CED that we will have, we will really need a lot of more community engagement and feedback and input. And the prior experience of this company with the other sections of the Jolos Greenway is a good thing. So I support that resolution. Resolution 158. I also support the DNR Spark Grant for previously stated reasons. It costs a lot of time, energy, money, and resources to do effective community engagement. And I think it's important that we look, seek funding to help support this so we can effectively engage with stakeholders and ensure that all voices are heard as we move forward with the Jolos Greenway and this alley project. 159, I really support the thoughtfulness that will go into this. I encourage members of the subcommittee to become familiar with the master plan and other relevant documents. And I think guidelines as suggested in this agenda item would help council negotiate future projects with a more unified, consistent voice than what happened with Z Box a few months ago. And lastly, 160, can I request more time? Thank you. Because I don't want to rush this.
Mayor, that's okay?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Lastly, regarding item 160, I'd like to thank our community members, our leaders, for coming forward to propose new language that addresses the sanitation and consent concerns raised by so many of our residents over the last several months. In talking with the community, I know there's still a few concerns, but I think this is a really big step towards a solution that works for all of us and respects the diversity of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Mr. Bill Meyer, Probridge. Welcome, sir. Three minutes.
By the way, I don't think anybody should have to apologize for being short. Thanks for the work you do. Phil Meyer, hello, Mayor, Council. Senior council meeting audience member. Been here longer than anybody, 22 years. And a citizen of the world. I'm here because I wanted to welcome the new council member. I'm very excited that Muhit Mahmoud is going to join you, members. I think he's an outstanding citizen in this city, very skilled. He's got social skills that are valuable in this city to work with each other. And I know he's not up here now, but I, and I'm not supposed to look that way. We're all very happy you're here. He had a depreciation dinner the other day. I mean, how many people do that? For hundreds of people, and just thanks the people for voting for him. And I, I know he's going to do a great job. And I'm just so excited about where the city's going. I don't know, I've been here for a long time, as you know. And the changes are outstanding. It's what Twyle and I have worked for, for 22 years in the city. To see people working together and finding common ground. We have hope this way. You can't go forward if you can't work together, first of all. So thank you. We still have the same problem, of course, but we're working on it. So I'm here to also thank everyone who's supported me during this terrible crisis here. The generosity and the love and support from many of you is inestimable. People have donated things to the memorial, have spoken, have sent me letters, have written a proclamation for Twyle, I have responded on. And you know who you are, and I don't want to single out any individuals, except I do have to single out my dear friend El Samiri, who graciously, without being asked, covered the cost of the food for the memorial the other day. He doesn't have to do that. I mean, I'm a poor guy, but thank you so much. It's stuff like that. And I said it at the, at the event itself. I said, how many examples can I give you of how many times I've been giving back the love that we try to give to other people? And that's what we need in the city. It's just, the greatest thing you're going to learn in life is just to love and be loved in return.
Bill, do you want your extra minute?
Give me a minute, please. And so that's where we have to start. We can't be fighting with each other and being rude and chest pumping during council meetings and stuff. It's not, it's not the way work gets done. So I'm very excited. Not only that, but our attorney has an entire thick book of Robert's Rules there. We'll never ask you a question again about the rules. She's got them right there. That's the biggest problem I have, obviously. Thank you so much. So I don't need another minute? I guess I should, no, thank you.
Odie's book is your Christmas present, so. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Nasser Hussain. I can't read the street, but I know you live here.
I'd like to speak on several things. One is the excuse absences of my brother Khalil. I think you should have a date there. What you have in the resolution, you can stay there for three, four years. There will be nothing council question. We had somebody in his position in case he takes too long to... It's unfair for the city to have somebody absent for so long. Just tell them like, when are you here, six months? Just, they know how long to expect you absent. The second one is the alleyway project. I hope the city goes to the business owners, talk to them. What would happen to their trash containers? Will they be able to have it or not? What would happen to the deliveries? This thing happens all the time. You do the work and everything, then at the end, the business owners, they deny anything. Affect their business. So it's good to talk to them and see how could you resolve the issue of these things. The speed bumps, Sumayri, good idea. I saw the speed bumps they, you had next to Harley, next to the other schools. They're very effective. For the lady who was complaining, you shouldn't install speed bumps next to Dickinson West, Dickinson, all the schools in Hamtramck, and probably more streets. School board have so much money now, they should be able to help with that thing. The development incentive policies that committee, that's wrong. You shouldn't give any incentive to anybody who wants to invest in Hamtramck. If they believe in Hamtramck, they come here, they can invest, they pay money. Don't give them any incentives. You just, the city is facing bankruptcy and you're giving them tax cuts all over the place. That doesn't make any sense. We slaughtered, we met with the American. We told them the committee never approached us. And we told them, tell them to do whatever they want. Write as many regulations they want and will accept it. And hopefully, there's no racism behind their right to their hard content, whatever they want, and save assets. City manager, in my opinion, the mayor should be an acting city manager. Max, as his assistant, if nobody wants to appoint the mayor, then instead of wasting time, just pick Max, he's the most qualified. Nobody will come to you and help. The city facing bankruptcy, become a city manager and it will be out in a month or two if the state takes over. So I think Max is the best choice. Stop wasting time, wasting money, and just pick him. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yasser Agan, Home Street. Three minutes, sir.
Salam alaikum. Tawal, hadi al-murra, ha'qif hana, wa'tklem al-araabi, wa'ha'awu tkelam amleiziyah. Mo'udua al-sar'ah al-zaidah wa'tafhiq fi al-shawarak al-farayi, waxusun amama al-madaris wa'amama al-masajid, waxusun bil-wakeen deshkoal. Ashtina min al-azaa, amal quanin qo'ya. La'af hi quanin, wala, yemkin al-quanin mishy qo'ya kida. Ashti quanin, enka, janaat quanin, fa'ro quanin. Ilma tukunna quanin, amal quanin jidda, fadaan, madiyil diirban. Ashti quanin zima quanin al-azahay. Dyaq tum alina fi mo'udua al-azahay, wakka quanin sarh muh fidda. Fmli b'tafhiq al-quanin fi mo'udua al-sar'ah wa'tafhiq, waxusun amama al-madaris. Wataqon quanin, meth quanin al-azahay, la'hanha mo'udua din. Alman anna mo'udua al-tafhiq wa'sar'ah al-zaidah, tawarzhaat al-nas wa'adfa al-ghatar. Aktaar b'iat al-maraq, bal-alaf al-maraq, mo'udua al-azahay. I will try to say it in English. I want to talk about the speeding in Hamtramck streets, especially in front of the schools and the mosques. I see many young people, they speeding a lot and making it dangerous for everyone, especially the kids. We want you make a strong law for that, like in Diirban. Why do we see only structured laws for religious, like the animal sacrifice only? Thank you.
Thank you. Imam Mark, do you want to speak now or later, or are you done?
Me? Me?
Yes?
Yeah, I'll speak.
You want to speak now? Welcome. Yom Ha'ad, Haseb.
Good evening again, salam alaikum. Thank you again for opportunity to be here with you. And at this moment, I would like to thank our Wayne County Commissioner Martha G. Scott for her contribution to the city of Hamtramck. That she helped us to get lots of money as a grants to run the city programs. And she helped Hamtramck when she was state senator as well. And working with Katie Eimer for many times, she helped on many grants. And she asked me to present you those calendars as gift from her. So I will leave it here.
I'll take it a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Besides that, I would like to let you know that spring is coming. Come with the Lions cleanups in the city of Hamtramck and nearby Detroit as well. Community gardens on area of Alpina and Harold Street. So we're looking for volunteers and our support is welcome. I also welcome our new councilman, Muhit. Congratulations. And thank you for willing to help the city as our politician. So regarding slaughtering animals in Hamtramck, I would like to ask you to be more cautious on this because we already have a mess, trash in the Hamtramck everywhere. So we need to really be considerable, not only what ordinance said, but what our health will look like. Blood is poison. In three, in ten, twenty minutes after drug on the ground, blood is poison. So we need to be aware of this. As a Muslim, I like to do, I have to do, that is my obligation. But that is a recommended place where I have to do that. So this is not that I oppose you, but just take it in your consideration more on that environmental and medical issues. Also, thank you. Also on our community cleanliness and speeding. Speeding and cleanliness not going from this house out. We are parents, we need to educate our children how to deal with trash, how to drive a car. We have a driving school that they educate students how to drive a car, but they did not educate them how to, they cannot control them how to drive. We have to educate because that's protecting their lives and lives of passengers and other vehicles as well. So this is not only from the police department, and not the police department have to do with that, just give them tickets. So community members, activists will come to complain to you because police ticketing people. So please, ask your drivers and families to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, Attic. Razul Chowdhury, Probridge, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, I want to congratulate Muhit Mahmoud to be a councilman. And I hope to do a great job. Second, on the Resolution 160, I see today you guys in the agenda, you're going to Probridge. So I have some opinion as a resident of Hamtramck. I've been in Hamtramck for 10 years. And I've been sacrificing for 22 years in United States. And every year I do it outside, not in my house. I don't think my sacrifice is not accepted or would not be acceptable if I don't do it at home. Second thing, you know, this resolution you created, we didn't see it. Lot of people don't know about it. What is in it? People have to know it. You are representing the people, and you have to listen from them first, what they're saying about what you are passing. So I will request to send it to a subcommittee and have a town hall meeting and listen from the community people. And a lot of things need to be clear, clear. You know, the animal sacrifice, it could be goat, or cow, or sheep, or camel. We don't know. So it has to be clear, what kind of animal? If I want to sacrifice an animal with all available restrictions, will you be allowed it? I know it has to be clear. Then somebody wants to sacrifice an animal and he or she going to bring it, how long he's going to keep it in his house? It has to be clear. And they're going to be doing it in an open place or it's a secure place. Lot of people don't see it, especially kids. We know that is, they love anyone. And they don't tolerate the blood and other stuff. So if my neighbor is sacrificing a cow or a camel in his backyard and my house is only five feet away from him, my kids can be afraid, they can be sick. So you have to think about it. Lot of cities has designated area for the slaughters. City can think about it. And last thing I want to mention, like, you know, the slaughterhouse in Hamtramck or other cities, they have to follow the specific procedure. They have to freeze it and dispose it in a special bags and stuffs. So whoever will do the sacrifice in their house, will they follow these things or not? So my concern is to leave Hamtramck clean. My previous... Thank you, brother Arif, he mentioned that city has lot of trash. We are failing to clean it up. We don't want to have more work for the city, more work for the community, more work for the families. And finally, we want a clean and safe city here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're done, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. This is approved in the same motion with no discussion. Item A, approval of minutes from the November 22nd, 2022 regular city council meeting. B, approval of focus register date ending December 13th, 2022. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending December 13th, 2022. D, resolution 2022-150 approving the 2023 regular city council meeting schedule. E, resolution 2022-151 approving excuse absences of council member Khalil Rafai. F, resolution 2022-152 approval of council and mayor appointment to boards and commissions.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objections? All right. We'll move to the new businesses. There's no public hearing. And we have my former resolution 2022-153 appointing Mohit Mahmood to fill the vacancy of five times city council.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Yes, so we all welcome you today, Mr. Council. And would like you to say a few words if you want.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. It's really a pleasure to bring here. You know, we all worked together to get elected. Unfortunately, I was not, I was short in the vote. And I made the right choice when I was not able to make it to the council meeting. And it's brought me back to the you guys, you know, that we used to sit down, be in different cafes every campaign time and exchange your thoughts and ideas for the city of Hamtramck, how can we make development to the city? And now I hope I can work together with you guys and bring a great city, you know, presented to the community that they are looking forward. And we all can work together and make, as we make promises, we make bridges to the community, not break it. So we need to find a ground root. How can we make bridges to the community, not among ourselves, among the other community as well? Make one Hamtramck livable for all of us. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
This resolution on the floor, may I have a discussion?
Yeah, we can discuss.
Yes, it is the resolution.
I was just thinking aloud.
Okay, so for this resolution, some of the people thinking this position, Mohit Mahmood, will be appointed today is not really appointed position. It is certain mandate for place council position. So some of the people is talking, I want to clear today, it is certain mandate elected fourth place position. It's not appointed position by the mayor or council. If it was the appointed position, we can bring anybody else to this position. Four vote, we can appoint. So I just want to clear that. And I think we all wish Mr. Mohit Mahmood will come to the board and will do the good job and do best for Hamtramck city. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to say something?
Let's get him back here, yeah.
Councilman Alsmirri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry.
Approved.
Councilman Jakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Mohit, can he have a seat?
Yes.
Want to take a quick picture?
I think we're missing something.
Mr. Attorney, I think we have to suspend the law right now. Although, yeah, then go the, finish up the protocol, then come back to the original council meeting. So I'd like to suspend the meeting to make the protocol for Mohit Mahmood.
Second.
I'm on board.
Yeah, let's do it.
We didn't suspend when the mayor was giving his presentation.
But because we have to swear a man or something, I don't know.
Yeah, we, yes, get sworn in, take a picture.
Who is sworn in?
That's why I said something missing. I can't say the word.
No, I know.
Yeah.
So we'll take pictures.
Yeah, I'll be back in a minute.
Right, yeah, that's what I was waiting for.
Let's get some pictures out of the way and she'll come right back up and we'll get that.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Amanda.
We're short, we got on the end.
Oh, no. Then I can...
No, when one white lady said she was short, I was like, it's not me today. I'm usually the shortest.
Credit.
Take it off. Those are some good pictures. Anyone else want to take a picture real quick?
Can I ask, lead last, please, come join with us for a picture?
You ran with us.
It was, it should be here.
Ma'am, please come join us.
Whoever else wants to get in here, come on. You can go in the back and it'll just be your head. Are we good? All right.
Thank you so much.
No, we have a discussion with five times.
So one, we could make an ordinance adjustment. Because we have one councilman who isn't applying official. So it makes sense to have one councilman. It would make sense. But locally, it's not allowed right now.
If not, then the other candidates, the other candidates, they're going to need to work on it.
I'm faking that I'm not out of breath right now.
Counselor? Soon to be, about 30 seconds?
Sorry, I'll just turn the microphone on. We're waiting for the paparazzi. No matter how far you get away from Greg, he has that zoom button.
You make it happen.
That's the best cameraman I ever saw. He's on it.
You ready, Mohit?
Yes.
I, Mohit.
I, Mohit.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I faithfully discharge.
The duties of the city council.
The duty of the city council.
Of the city of Hamtramck.
Of the city of Hamtramck.
According to the best of my ability.
According to my best of ability.
Congratulations.
Forgot his last name when he entered the...
You want me to redo?
Yeah, you got to redo it. There's a lot of Mohit.
Not one that looks like this.
Garamas looks better.
Thank you, and I'll get you your copy.
I got the picture right upstairs, too. Sitting my office. Pictures ready, the plaques ready, everything's ready upstairs.
I think we can continue the conversation.
All right, we'll move to the next resolution.
You have to un-suspend now.
Accessment. Resume, my second. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the next resolution, 2022-154, approving contract extension with rapid response emergency medical services.
Hold on. Second.
Mr. Mayor, I do have the fire chief here to answer any questions. But in short, it's just a renew of the contract. It's all staying the same. We still are closely monitoring this to potentially adjust it for peak times and not. We still have the second ambulance available during peak times. We still are exploring other options to better the service and we still are exploring options of potentially re-equip in our fire department to handle it in the future as well. So everything's still in motion, but we still need ambulance services in the meantime. And if you had any particulars, the fire chiefs on here, that answer as well.
Mr. Mayor? A very, very quick question. Is this is how it is currently is with that modified peak hours, right?
Yes, we can change them hours as we go. If we have, they're where we want them right now. And if we need to, because we think peak hour times need be changed, we can tweak them down.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
The fire chief's monitoring it.
Okay.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Councilman Jakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Alsmirri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution?
There's adjustments.
At least I didn't call you, I'll mock you. Councilman Mahmood.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, resolution 22-154 has been approved.
Thank you. Next one is the resolution 2022-155, we appointing Woodhill Group in continued temporary capacity of providing accounting, finance and treasury services.
Motion?
Second.
Mayor, if I may? Woodhill Group has been with us for multiple months at this point. They were acting in the capacity of the CFO for us. They have resigned from that position, but we still do need them in a support capacity. This is just a modification of that original contract. It's 100% we need to have this for the moment until we can appoint a full-time controller. Which brings me to another point. If anyone knows any good controllers, we are in desperate need.
Vote? Thank you. Councilman Mahmood.
Yes.
Councilman Alsmirri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry.
Yes.
Councilman Jakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 22-155 approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution 2022-156, appointing Rodney Johnson in the interim capacity of the director of the Department of Public Services.
Motion? Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? As most everyone here is aware, Mr. Diamond is retiring from the city. Very unfortunate, but we do wish him well, which is leaving a large hole of vacancy in our DPS. Mr. Johnson was our former DPS director prior to Mr. Diamond. He did take, essentially was trying to retire, took a limited capacity and was still working for us in a part-time capacity to assist us in areas we needed to, including training. Thankfully, he is still on hand and is willing to step up in the meantime to help us out in the short term and available. With that said, we are actively looking for a DPS director. I believe we have found one already. I'm pleased to announce, I'm not going to announce the name just yet, but hopefully this will be a very short-term thing with Mr. Johnson. Then Mr. Johnson will remain in a capacity to train the new director and hopefully we will have a very smooth transition there.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Alsmirri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Chaudry.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmood.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman, Councilman Jakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 22-156 approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution 2022-157, approving award of contract for preliminary Hamtramck project design and planning services to spending the Decker Associates and Corporation.
Motion? Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Ms. Faulkner with us to present on this one and actually the next two.
Hi, council. Hi, mayor. Thank you so much for letting me present today. The city created the Hamtramck Alley Project, RFP, in November 2022. This is grant-funded and it's for the preliminary design work for the proposed alleyway. These designs would become the basis for future community engagement. The city received two bids for, by the deadline, which was December 5th. And the lowest bidder was Metro Consulting Associates at $33,990. And the second building with bidder was Spalding Decker at $40,000. Again, this is funded by a grant through SEMCOG. According to the proposal received from Spalding Decker, they will focus the design on addressing the challenges that exist regarding traffic calming and safety, waste management in the alley, consolidation, drainage, lighting and street crossings. This includes some of the safety concerns with all of the intersections, the trash concerns. This is a very multidisciplinary team. They have urban planners, they have people who are focused on community engagement, they also have a lot of people with traffic and pedestrian and bike engineering experience. Bold Studio is one of the partners, which is a Detroit-based architectural design consultant. And so what would be the product of this project? Several design concepts, two minimum, would be accessible to the public and used for public engagement to receive feedback. We don't want to just present one concept to the public, but really have two and say, hey, we could do this, or we could do this, and then get feedback of, you know, this is better, or maybe we can combine the different concepts based on feedback. This company has experience with urban alley design, believe it or not. You can look on page 15 and page 17 of the 30-page proposal as well. Page 20 shows the scope of work. I want to bring special attention to the three project goals and the two priorities on page 20. I'll just read these real quick. So goal one would be to produce multiple preliminary design options for the Hamtramck Alley Project with materials accessible to the public as well as for technical audiences. Goal number two would be to provide a variety of outreach materials that would aid in future community engagement. And then there are three priorities for these goals. One is to have a shared use path centered in the alleyway that must focus on pedestrians and cyclists, but still allow for residential and business vehicular access when needed. And then there's two more priorities here, I'm not going to list them, but they are on page 20. So also there is a representative from the company here today. Cassie, if you want to raise your hand, thank you. So if you have any questions for me or for her, feel free to ask.
Mr. Chair? Still city has to pay $7,260.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, I don't want my colleague to think about... Okay, I don't want my colleague to think about it's all going from the grain money. Still, we are matching seven thousand two hundred sixty dollars. It is the good idea if it is workout for the future Hamtramck. So somebody is going to supervise the company, make sure they're doing their job, not only taking the grain money and just draw the map if we don't want for the future. So that's all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
I know that you all do a lot of community outreach, and a lot of the feedback that we get from people is, "Oh, we never heard from them." So is this team going to cover that gap? Where you do outreach, but it isn't always received by the right person? Because maybe you talked to the cash register, and they didn't tell the owner or something. You know, I know there's a lot of gaps. So like, how is this going to address that?
So this grant would cover the creation of the materials. There are other grants available. In fact, that's the next agenda item. That group would do more of the actual hosting of meetings, because we don't really have enough staff to, we already attend a bunch of meetings every month. We'll be having these community meetings. So this group would probably do, I think, five interviews, I believe is in the proposal. Create the materials. Those materials would be ready as of June. And then there's another grant that's much larger that could cover a firm to really host these materials with posters and gather feedback, publish these concepts publicly.
Councilwoman, we heard the city loud and clear that, you know, we are going to get the feedback from the community, the businesses. Ms. Faulkner, 100% understands that and will be guiding this in that direction. So 100% understand that and will be moving forward accordingly. Also of note that, generally speaking, Hennessy Engineering does our engineering for our infrastructure, but the call of this was very specific. Hence, we look for, you know, a company that could do what we needed to do.
I do want to say also that we do have two surveys available on the city website about the alley. We do encourage people to fill those out. We do hope to have consultants and students and interns go out and share more that, just to let people know that those are available to fill out. You know, you can talk about when do you receive deliveries, you know? What do you like about this proposal? What do you not like? So those are on the city website currently.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Menjakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Chadri.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty-one fifty-seven approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution twenty twenty-two dash one fifty-eight. Firm in council's support of the city's DNR Spark Grant application for planning, design, and construction of the Hamtramck Alleyway project. Make a motion.
Second. Mr. Mayor, as we know, Ms. Faulkner is presenting, but I did want to mention real quickly that some of you may recognize this Spark Grant as something that's come up before. We're double-dipping here, trying to apply for it in two ways. I've been assured that it is perfectly fine to do, and we're hoping to get both awarded.
So what does DNF stand for?
Department of Natural Resources.
Vote?
Want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, so continuing on the last of what we were just speaking about. So this would really, this grant, we're in the application phase. So the last grant has already been received. This is one that we have not yet applied for. We're wondering if you would support it and provide a resolution as such. It is for design and community engagement, which is a big focus, what you were just talking about, Councilwoman. They would be able to do the community engagement meetings as well as complete the engineering and the construction. It is a one-million-dollar ask. It has no MASH required, which is pretty rare. We're not going to apply for this just yet. There's several phases of this grant, so we're looking to apply for this sometime in 2023, so that soon after the work being done, that will end in June and July, this new grant could pick up the work. That is really it for this grant application. Do you have any questions?
Councilman El Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Chadri.
Yes.
Councilman Menjakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty-two one fifty-eight approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution twenty twenty-two dash one fifty-nine. Approving proposal to create a development incentive policy subcommittee.
Motion.
Second. Max, you want to speak?
Mr. Mayor, this is basically requesting you get a subcommittee to put together basically a policy for what we're going to do as far as the city is concerned for taxes incentives. Ms. Faulkner can explain it a little more detailed, but this subcommittee, we anticipate, would be only a couple meetings to get a direction of what Council and Mayor would want us to do, and then proceed accordingly. You want to add to it, Ms. Faulkner?
Yep, thank you. So I'm very happy to present this proposal today. Part of having a strong economic development policy is knowing in advance as a city which type of incentives we want to offer and in which situations. This is done by adopting policy documents for incentives. I want to give an example of a project in Milwaukee that transformed an entire industrial area, the Menominee Valley Redevelopment Project. This was a large industrial zone that now has multiple clean and sustainable manufacturing facilities. It generates significant taxes for the City of Milwaukee, and also each facility has a high number of jobs. But what I want to point out was, at the beginning of the process, about 15 years ago, the goals were set for that region. How many jobs per acre did they want? What kind of companies did they want? How much investment did they want? There were specific metrics that were set up in advance. So as a city, we received many requests for incentives. These can be financial or non-financial incentives. We're basically, as Max said, proposing a subcommittee so that CED can share some examples from other cities and just get a general idea to formally put together a policy that we could later bring to the full council to adopt. So this would be starting with the industrial facilities exemption policy. The goal would be to adopt a policy, to discuss and adopt one in the next six months. I do want to share an example of a local policy that we adopted in 2020. So this is the obsolete property redevelopment policy. It's on page fifteen of the PDF in Board Dogs. This stands for, it's called Oprah, which I find confusing, but it stands for Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act. It's a central business district, and the aim is to bring abandoned buildings back to use. So the rehab cost could be significant, could be a million dollars to get a building back to productive use. But what I want to point out specifically is that 2020 policy, which covers a central business district, has a very specific point system. So a project would come in and show, this is the number of jobs, this is the green, sustainable features, this is how much money they're investing, and they might get, based on those points, somewhere between seven and 12 years. I also want to state that the policy is non-binding. So council could adopt a policy, but then when an actual application comes in, maybe modify it, you know? Even if the policy says this type of situation should get eight years, maybe there's unique circumstances and council wants to do something different. But at least we have a policy on the books that shares a point system and really kind of what we're aiming for. So similarly to what we already have adopted for the downtown, this would be something similar for industrial facilities. Again, the subcommittee with, I mean, staff would bring some ideas from other cities, but could state, you know, "These are the type of companies," or "These are the number of jobs that we want to attract" and develop a point system and a policy for the industrial facilities exemption, because I believe we will continue to receive applications. That is it for now, unless you have any questions.
Mr. Chair. Discussion here. So now we try to do the industrial area also. But again, like Mayor said, a subcommittee, there is the, the council person will be there, it's not for all the decision. There's only three council members will be there. So trophies by trophies, subcommittee will change. It cannot be same three person for every subcommittee. And also, subcommittees has to communicate with the other council members, with the other cities, how they deal with the other cities. And also, we again, Mr. Nasir Hussain said, we all have to look for the dollar amount, and eventually, we have to worry about how we're going to run the Hamtramck City in future. So if we do the subcommittee, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to include, if you agree to make it today. So new councilman, Muhyid Mahmoud has time. He will be one of the good councilmen out of three. That's why I feel. And again, the three subcommittee, it depends on agenda, depends on trophies, depends on necessity. Example, we had a city manager charging research. We have one subcommittee. We have an ordinance, a specific animal ordinance, have the one subcommittee. Something, any other issue come, it could be another subcommittee. So subcommittee should be the different way to arrange. That is my proposal.
So this subcommittee, like Max said, would meet only twice a year.
No problem.
Twice total.
I think, yeah, the main goal for this particular incentive would be, one, to give some examples from other cities and just gather feedback. Staff then use that to create a policy, come back with it, and then it could go to council. But it's quite a lot of work to put together a policy like this, so it'd be helpful to get some information upfront of really what should be in it.
And the rules are that when we form a subcommittee, the mayor appoints two, and the council appoint the third member. So it's, I'm very flexible. Whoever had time, you know, was welcome to join. I would like to include the new councilmember, Muhyid, on this subcommittee. And are you interested to be in that subcommittee?
Honestly, no.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chadri, would you like to be in there?
When would this start? Starting next year?
Yeah, definitely not till at least January. Again, I honestly, you would need a little bit of time to get the examples from the other cities. I already have some of them, but it's not.
We could certainly be flexible, Councilman. If there's time constraints on council, we can push it out.
I know, I don't have the capacity for another one right now.
Congrats.
Who's not on a sub, who's not on a subcommittee?
This will be very, this will be a very gentle.
Did you say it's a twice a year, or perhaps?
Samiri and I, Samiri and I are both on two.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, I'll pick this one, because that's one.
Okay, it's only two.
So one more, you're going to be upset, so I guess this. That's fine. I mean, my tax season preparation is coming up next three months, so that's what I'm afraid of, you know? All right?
We'll work.
Okay.
We're not, we're not.
He's going to be upset, so you know, I'm not, sure.
So all right, so we have the three Bengali, we're going to celebrate the Bengali by street.
What?
So we got the three members of the subcommittee.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
I'm going to vote.
Yep, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Chadri.
Yes.
Councilman Menjakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty-two one fifty-nine approved.
Thank you. All right, the next one, and the one before the last, is resolution twenty twenty-two dash one sixty. Approving first reading of amendment to Hamtramck Alley ordinance. Make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
I just want to make sure that everyone remembers that this is a first reading and that there will be a time period in between for a public comment and a second reading and a public hearing at a future council meeting.
The public hearing will be the first, yes, January 10th, the first of January, the first meeting of January since our last of December is canceled.
Yes, that's true. All right, do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor.
So this is the one. Subcommittee work a lot, we have a lot of compromise, misunderstanding, good understanding again. We came to this resolution. So a lot of people worry about the blood and other things. There is the formula, we're going to go through the people. Everybody who going to do this, they knows they are family more important than anybody else. So they will be careful, and the cleanup will be carefully within specific hours has to be done. Everything should be clear right now, and we will start doing that if it is approved. If anything happen, anything oddly, anything making problem, we can bring it back to stop it again. It's not the like, anything we cannot do. And Councilwoman, already clear that it is the first reading. We have enough time to talk, and our intention, my intention specifically, I will try, I want to do it and see how this go. That's why I'm supporting. Thank you.
So this ordinance took so much time and efforts of every member in this city council. We spent so much time talking back and forth in between the meeting, not just during the meetings. And we met with several community leaders in the past few weeks, and we were able to come up with a compromise. Because whenever there's a controversial issue like this one, you do not expect to walk away with 100% of what you want. There would be a compromise, so something would be there that you don't like. Because if we don't, if you get 100% of what you want, that means the other side would not be happy. And that's what we were able to come up with, a compromise that could be the best that we could come up with. Anything, it's written in there, and we seek help from our attorney to write it and leave it in a professional way. We, and I know, I talked to both sides, and none of them is, you know, 100% happy and satisfied, because we made a compromise. So there's some regulations, and there's some plan. It's still open between now and the next reading for any amendment or addition or adjustment. So you could see there, if any of you read it, we require people to notify the city at least a week before slaughtering, and specify the exact date, when are you going to slaughter? And there would be some fees for, you know, you have to provide your name, your address, and some fees to be used for, you know, the workforce that will do the inspection or for dumpsters, if the city will provide some. And failure to obtain that permit will cost the person $400 violation. And like it's written in there, you won't get in public. Also, what would mean that you did not obtain your permit, and that means $400 violation again. Improver waste disposal and not maintaining safe and healthy environment will also cost the person a penalty of $800. And like we said, there would be, we still open for any ideas or suggestions from anyone. But when I met the last time with both sides, they both agreed on these. And some of them are not happy for having a permit. They're saying this is restriction for practicing the rites. They are supposed to do that, but the permit is not to practice your religious rituals. It is for, to guarantee safe and healthy and clean environment, so we can, you know, take into consideration the concerns of the neighbors and the residents of the city. So that's what we could come up with, and I think, you know, almost everyone here is okay with this plan. And like I said, there is room for improvement and addition and adjustment. And that's just a summary of what we went through in the past few weeks.
Out of curiosity, what if a whole year passes by and not even a permit gets bought? Does that mean that nobody's killing, or they're killing without a permit?
Well, if not enough permits, that means, you know, the excessive worries of having a disaster in the day of Eid is not true. It was an exaggeration, that means not, like I keep saying, 99% of the people will not slaughter. I know that for sure. So we will not get so many permits, it's for sure. But if we discover that someone is... But if we discover that someone is slaughtering without a permit, there's a penalty for that.
There's the city responsibility to take care of that.
So we encourage residents, neighbors to, you know, call the city if they notice any suspicious activities. But if not enough permits, that means it is true that not too many people will be slaughtered. If so many permits are required, that means we are doing good. We are, you know, make, having some resources to use for the dumpsters and workforce for code enforcement and other stuff.
Samir, you say when they are slaughtering. But how long, I see that the public comment someone made that how long they can keep the animal on their backyard or, or on their property? When they, they will bring the animal for the slaughtering? It does not clear on this proposal, I mean, what you read, so.
That's a good point. I, I think most people, they order them and they arrive in the day of Eid. That's how I see it.
Mr. Mayor, I think it is worth discussing in a meeting, like not today, but in the interim. It's very worth discussing that point.
He made a few good points.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just wanna make a couple comments. Yourself and council have worked, put in a tremendous amount of time on this ordinance. Everyone behind us, even mayor or council-elect. And now Councilman Mahmud has weighed in on this at this point. There has been so much conversation going on back and forth. And it's an understatement to say you put in a lot of effort to try to compromise on this because everyone behind there has. Trust me, I know. I've talked to every one of you so many times on this. Our city attorney, city staff, everyone has weighed in on it. Part of the ordinance itself is intentionally a little bit vague because we don't wanna get really, really specific because we're, we're not health inspectors here. We, we don't have the credentials for it. We don't have the certifications and the things we need. We, we hear loud and clear some of the concerns with this, such as, you know, cleanliness. I mean, we can, as city, as a city, we can certainly go out there and give our lay opinion if it looks like it's been cleaned properly. But anything beyond that, we would have to turn over to the health department. So there are some vague, intentionally vague parts to it because we don't wanna get bogged down on it any more than we have to. It is a religious exemption. We don't wanna restrict it any more than we have to other than for health and safety.
Mr. Chair? What's matter, Fadi?
Well, you know, like all of you guys know, we have put so much time on this resolution. And then in the end, you know, we all wanted a compromise. And I'm happy that we, we did come up with this compromise. And that's what we were asking in the beginning. It's a plan, a way of, you know, if we are allowed to slaughter, you know, how's the ways to slaughter? So I'm happy what we have now. Again, you know, it's a first reading. So if there's anything that we wanna change, we're able to change, like your concern, Councilman Mahmud. So, again, it's a first reading. We're, we're glad to compromise with, with all the council members and community, members up from the city of Hamtramck. And a special thanks to the American PAC, President Muhter Ansar, for really, you know, having the community with you, Mayor, and sit down and really come to a compromise and make a deal where we're able to, to make something or make maybe both sides happy. So I'm, I'm happy with this.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I would like to thank members of the American PAC, Mr. Muhter, Muthar Fader, Raziz Joubah. And I would like to thank also Sheikh Yasser here and Nasr Hussain and Adnan Joubah and Mansoor Jam, Sheikh Saad Jam. They all were in the meeting. And we had different views and we were able to come up with a compromise. Some of them did come to the meeting refusing totally the permit issue. And by the end of the meeting, they agreed to accept the, the permit thing. So I would like to thank them all for, you know. Sheikh Saad Jam said if, if, if the permits would, does not cover the cost of waste disposal process, he is ready to give $1,000 from his own pocket. Masjid Ali also, we're ready to, to cover the cost as well with Masjid Mahar. So I'd like to thank them all for, you know, everything they did to try to accommodate this.
Mr. Chair?
I think, Councilman Charlie first.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I would like to thank to the subcommittee compromising with the community leaders and working so hard to come up with the revised, the provisions of charter 90 animals slaughtering. You know, it is very much changed. This is what we wanted to see, you know, how we're going to slaughter, how we're going to proceed cleaning afterwards. And thank you so much, American PAC also putting their effort and time to put together this charter revised animal ordinance. You know, this, it's a first reading and we wanted to give a shot. I hear the public other comments of that people gonna have a trauma or, you know, the kids will be scared and whatnot. But this has been for us long time since the Adam and Eve, since we were told to do so. So kids not going to be so much of a, you know, scared or in trouble. It's gonna be in a closed door somewhere, safe. I'd like to, you know, thanks everyone, everybody putting their effort and time for these things. And thank you so much, including our CM, city manager, communicating with us, you know, emailing and back and forth. And also city attorney. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
I know this ordinance and this resolution today, 160. I know this time is a first reading. I spoke with many people. They got some couple people, they accept that one. Other people, they read the resolution in the ordinance, they didn't accept the detail. I'm not happy with this detail. We need more detail. That's why I'm not gonna accept today for this detail. We need some more detail to make other people is happy. Not everybody, they accept, they accept couple percent. That's what I hear from a lot of people. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if nobody says?
If you ask any more details, we'd be happy to add the adjustment. Yeah, so we are happy to hear from you.
You listen for the people, I listen for my community. You wanna say 100 people, I listen for a lot of people.
I understand.
Everybody is not happy. We listen for couple people, you listen for some other people.
No, the community is divided and we made a compromise.
Yes. I know this, I know this is a first reading, but this, I speak with, I hear for other people. Not everybody is happy. And I am too, I'm not happy for this detail.
Well, you should have responded. You should have responded to me when I texted you. You didn't even respond, so you didn't.
We spoke with other people.
Why you didn't speak to me when I asked you for your input? So.
Anyway, this today is a first reading.
Okay, we're happy to adjust anything and add anything. So come up with any ideas, it's still open for any new ideas. If any new ideas are welcome. Mr. Mayor, put them.
Mr. Chair, unless anybody, any council member wanna speak, okay. So here's the one. Six years ago, this is for Councilman Muhyid Mahmud to know. If city clerk did his job correctly, six years ago, we have proved chicken, goat, you can have your backyard, okay? This resolution was passed, isn't me, I was denied. Karan Maia's including them, four vote was yes. So we don't have that record. If it was that record, goat already in my backyard because it was a long time ago. Second thing, we cannot make everybody happy. I really thanks for my council members, Mr. Mayor, city manager and attorney. Even though attorney not getting paid, he answering the phone back and forth, helping us, helping us to make this resolution ordinance lawfully correct. Thank you. I heard from the community. How young they have a meeting, they called me. I said, what Mr. Colley said? Same team I'm saying, go ahead together, bring it to us. We need to do that, no question. So again, we cannot make everybody happy. And we tried and we'll do the experimental. And also, I will put $1,000 for the dumpster. Make sure city don't have to pay any money. There's a lot of people wanna pay. A lot of people volunteer to collect all those garbage for the dumpster. And on time, we can ship that out from Hamtramck City. And there's a lot of volunteer, including Saleh, including Sheikh Yasser and others. They're gonna be observing, they'll take this from city, observing the house to house, make sure they're following correctly. So those, those kinds of observation committee, community, and, and, and 80% community wanna see that. I'm sorry, 20% maybe don't wanna see that. What can I do? So we try, we're not saying we gotta do it. We are gonna try, see how this go. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a question? Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to give me the opportunity. So this is my first day. I don't know much about it. You know, I try my best to gather information as much as I can. I talk to the community, I see both side. There's a strong pull to it and some people really wanna do it. And I respect a people's opinion. This is also, it's a religious practice and I respect the practice that we have to do. So instead of, my point is, since it's a public issue, instead of six of us, instead of six of us making decision, why don't public make the decision about this agenda? Why can't it put it to the next ballot? That's perhaps people of the citizens in Pramik, they make the decision how this gonna be. That was one of the ideas. But we, we don't want to keep like for one year from now until the next election, dealing with this. This has wasted so much time of our time and efforts. Our city hall is not stable. We, we, we need to focus on major issues that we have. So I really want to get done with this and throw it behind us and move on. This was unexpected issue to rise from the beginning. We were not expecting this to be, you consume so much power, time and effort. So if we just postpone it for one year until the election, this would be so much waste of time and effort. And I'm not against that, it's, it's a good idea. But if we can come up with a compromise, because some people are against it. Some people are saying, what if we have a minority that makes 2% of the city? Would you, and they wanna practice their religious race? Would you put it to the ballot? And the 98% of people will oppose that and reject their race to practice their religious rituals? That's another argument that they are saying. So we have, you know, to protect minority, even if they are minorities who are willing to slaughter. We have to protect their race as well. So I really, if, if we all agree on this compromise, come up with new ideas between now and January 10th, I think that would be the best solution and move on to discuss other issues of the city.
Okay.
So we've been not voting on this today? Yeah, we are voting and then we have another reading, next one. So we'll bring it back next month.
What?
This is only a first reading.
I'm sorry, so per my understanding.
It's a public hearing. So we're public, anything public hearing where we're gonna change an ordinance. If there's an ordinance change, yes, they have a first hearing where you're announcing that we're going to have a public hearing. I posted in the newspaper showing the residents that we're going to have a public hearing on the January 10th so they can come and have a public comment and speak on the issue. And then the second hearing is when you vote overall if the ordinance is going to pass or not. So that's like in a nutshell, how the ordinance approvals are. So first hearing, first reading, and then second reading and hearing.
And at that meeting, council have opportunity to change things if they want to, on fly.
Definitely, council, that's when the people who are opposed regarding this issue, that's when they can come to, you know, second, you know, after reading.
Even right now, there's a lot of discussion about it. It's only a first reading. So most of the discussion is handled, you know, during the public hearing.
I hope guys that most of the bugs are worked out before then.
Yeah.
All right, we can vote on it.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Rafi?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
No.
Councilman Mahmud?
Can I say neutral, since I don't know much about it?
Absolutely.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Charlie?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 22-160 approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to the next one. Resolution 2022-161, recognizing the Bengaladishi National Holiday Victory Day.
Motion.
Discussion?
Mayor? May I just read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Then I'll give.
Yeah, it's a, it's a more of a proclamation.
Proclamation, it was supposed to be. So thank you so much. Resolution 2022-161, recognizing the Bengaladishi National Holiday Victory Day, whereas also known as Rejoy Divaish. Bangladesh Victory Day is celebrated on December 16 every year. The occasion commemorates the victory of the Bangladesh and Indian forces over the Pakistani forces in the Bangladesh Liberation War in 1971, during which close to 3 million Bangladesh were killed while 10 million were made refugees. Bangladesh celebrates its Independence Day on March 26, but that is when the atrocities of this war begun. It finally ended nearly nine months later, on December 16, and whereas it all started with India's independence back in 1947, which created the dominion of Pakistan. This meant Pakistan now had to separate regions on either side of India, West Pakistan and East Pakistan, which led to friction between the two regions. On March 26, 1971, when Bangladesh gained independence, it kickstarted the liberation war. This genocide began with the launch of operation of Searchlight as West Pakistan, now Pakistan, crackdown on East Pakistan, now Bangladesh. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Hamtramck City Council recognizes Victory Day and its observance month of December for 2022.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion?
Yes.
All right, can go.
Councilman Charlie?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Rafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 22, 2022-161 approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I don't know, attorney's not here. If I suspend the law, can I bring something for discussion in your business?
I think it should be only during the discussions and negotiations.
That time? I was thinking also, it is not gonna be vote. It is only discussion, just discussion. That's what I was thinking.
Can we discuss during reports?
No, just as a discussion. I can speak in my.
You can break it up as a.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we need to report and then[1679.85]
Yeah, we need to report and then it requires discussion in the next meeting. All right, so we move now to the reports. I'll start with my reports, which I actually, I want to take this opportunity first to thank Imam Arif for recognition. I attended this event last November twenty-third, the Commonwealth Alliance. It was a great event where I met so many people there from different backgrounds and religions. But the program was a little bit long, so I actually leave and I didn't get my certificate until now. So thank you so much for all the hard work that you do to bring...
You're welcome.
Thank you. Also, last December, last, on December fourth, I attended the Hoda Clinic event in Nibon, which is a clinic that serves the uninsured people or underinsured people. They do so much healthcare services to the people who are in need of help. So they serve people to diagnose them, treat them, do some labs. So it was a fundraising event and I was there with some elected officials, including Rashida Talib, Ibrahim Ayash, and others, and it was a good event as well. Also, on December eleventh, we attended the Memorial Day of Joela Frances Meyer, and I want to thank Mr. Bill Meyer for hosting that great event. We met so many people of Joela's friends, and they spoke so much good stuff. We watched so much stuff that I didn't know about, from her life story. We learned so much about her, and I want to thank everyone who attended that meeting and who contributed to making it successful. And we are here, you know, we see Bill Meyer again in the meeting. We missed him for the past few months because of what he went through. So thanks again for joining us, Bill. Other than that, we are just again busy watching the World Cup games today. My favorite team, Argentina, made it to the final. And tomorrow, we are praying for Morocco to make it to the final.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, real briefly, can we put on the record, Councilwoman left at twenty fifty hours. I anticipated her leaving, she wasn't feeling well. She muscled through the meeting because she thought it was important, but she hasn't partied for that.
Okay. All right, we move to the report of Mayor Bruton.
Mr. Chair, here is couple of complaint, not complaint actually, is the logic argument with my colleagues and myself, and somewhere from the outside candidate, city manager candidate also, a little brought the concern to me about the process of the city manager. So since our city manager, that was the discussion I tried to do because Anthony was a little step out, has shown us interest for the city manager position. So to avoid the conflict of interest from now to until confirmed the position candidate, if officially city manager apply for the position from that day, in term city manager should not handle any more process of the application. So Mr. Dasser Hussain just mentioned that one mayor should take over the acting manager position? No, there is the two government, governmental city, we run managerial government, mayoral government. So how we run the managerial government, mayor cannot take that position. So that case, assistant city manager only could be the responsible for in process the application until get the permanent manager position. Only the reason because of our city manager apply for it. That's why people don't want a conflict of interest. That kind of things came to couple of candidate call me as a mayor pro tem. Our councils among has a discussion, a little bit. So that's why I brought to the concern, and we'll think about it with Anthony and yourselves, please. Let us know. And also, thanks to my colleagues. Most of the time, I cannot give enough time. Last, this year was very tough for my industry because I'm part of the Fort F-150 program. So, and no way, nobody can take the day off. And of course, let me, everybody know one fifty. So some of the council member may be angry, we cannot be all the time, agree everything. There is the agree, disagree, disagree to agree. Me and councilwoman, a lot of argument, as a friendly, lots of argument. You have to do this, you have to do this, you have to listen to me, you have to, okay, okay. So that kind of thing outside we do, and we cannot show here. I call, call it a five million time, I call you later. So again, still we have a good relationship, and we are working together, make Hamtramck City better. And I like to thanks again, and I like to sorry also for my absence. It was not intentionally. Last week, I had the COVID again, so this year I have three times COVID. What can I do? I cannot count up there one. So I got the result to the negative, that's why I came here. Otherwise, I have to take the day off again because I cannot spread the COVID to my colleagues and other my residents. So that's all, so far good year. And another, somebody mentioned me about the calendar thing, and I already explained to them. It was good, everything looks good. So thanks again, and have a safe day.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we'll move to the city council reports.
Mr. Chair, first of all, all the residents that showed up here today. And regarding city manager position, you know, it's been posted in a lot of websites. I don't want people to think, you know, just in the city's website. It's also, you know, been in through Winston University, Masters of Public Administration, Indiana University, Central Michigan University, University of Louisville, Michigan State University, UTR Women's Leadership Network, the Muslim American Public Service, Great Lakes Political Academy, and now hopefully is gonna be published at MML's website. We trying to get, you know, candidates from all different backgrounds. It's open for everybody, you know. Hopefully, we will have a lot of candidates that will apply for this position. And hopefully, council, mayor will choose the best candidate that will present the city of Hamtramck and its residents. Again, have a great night, and I'll be leaving overseas. So any individuals or residents on the city of Hamtramck want to reach out to me or anyone, please do so through my email. Be safe, and God bless all of you guys.
WhatsApp would be open, call me on WhatsApp.
Or WhatsApp, yeah. Email is the best way of networking.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question, if you don't mind? I know I missed the first part, proclamation and recognition. Can I cancel and recognize someone? Or is too late? You can do your report and just... Yes, now it's your report. Okay, I don't know, so as I said, pardon me, I'm new, so you guys have to walk me through. I just may recognize one of the employee who work for city inside the city hall. I went for service, her name is Renata White. She worked for hardware technician. Professionalism, approachment is really made. You know, she is very professional. I look like she's enjoying her job, and I think she should get recognized, and our other employee can get encouragement that we should be like this. She should be a role model for the city of Hamtramck. The way she approached me, the way she talked to me, she don't know that I'm becoming a city council. Does not become because she helping me out, because she knows something. I was just walking person. When Mr. Manager sent me over for full apartment from one of my house, I was really impressed about her job performance. So I want to applaud her for doing a great job for the city of Hamtramck, for public. All right?
I would tell you, I'm going to tell her, but this wonderful woman is leaving to Brazil tomorrow. She'll be back, I'll tell her when she gets back.
All right, that's good. No, it's, I mean, it's only not her. Anyone who work for the city, and if you see they are doing outstanding job, should recognize them. Don't just recognize as community people. That's the way they feel like they are value for the city of Hamtramck and city office. We appreciate them. Thank you.
Even though I told her the FIFA is in Qatar, not in Brazil.
What, she's Brazilian or something?
Yeah, she is.
She's from Brazil.
She is.
She's going for the Christmas break.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thanks our audience, our residents, citizens, everyone to be being here tonight. Thank you so much for your comments and your presence. I have two announcements. Tomorrow is HCI meeting, that is Hamtramck Community Initiative meeting. We will meet at six thirty at one one six five one. I'm one of the board member for SCI. So welcome to join us, that location again, one one six five one, Conan Street. It's Adnan's Hamtramck Hardware Place. The second, I'd like to thank Mali Lukwan for giving us this, what do you guys call it, this thing? Holder? Yeah, this is from her, appreciate it. Regarding the city managers, you know, as my colleague said, we have posted on so many educational institute that is still, you know, going through. So we need to give some time, see outcome of that. You know, we don't want to just jumping to conclusions, you know, make a memory temporary managers and see intrinsic managers, manager. I mean, we did not give enough opportunities to the other folks to apply. It's just that we started two weeks ago posting all those sites. So I would recommend to give more time to see what is the outcome of it next year. The other, yeah, then, you know, good council meeting going on. Everyone's are, you know, working together, working for one goal, to serve the communities with the due diligence. And that's what we are elected for. You know, I'm always up for the communities because of their taxpayer. They elected me, they voted for me. Whatever is beneficial to the communities, accommodations, making things better, not to make it difficult for the communities, you know. That gonna have a difficult, you know, to accommodate, difficult to adjust. Already, this community consists of the immigrant communities, you know. They come to this country new, and they don't know which direction to go, and we're keep changing and keep doing things, and that's not gonna help. With this being said, I wanted to say happy holidays and happy new year in advance. God bless you and be safe. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, you want to recognize me?
So where are you? Your coffee is on me tonight.
Yeah, she does not need any coffee.
All right, so we move to the public conference.
Oh, man.
Oh, city manager, I'm sorry.
All right, so just a couple minor things. City Hall's been working really hard to fill our positions. Our controller position is the biggest, biggest one on our minds right now. We are interviewing actively for it. We need a controller badly in the city. I would ask that all those websites that you're also marketing the city manager position for, please market the controller one, because that is immediate and we need that. As far as alleys go, we've got seven of the nine alleys complete. We originally anticipated getting all nine done prior to the snow flying at the end of the year here. Unfortunately, we ran out of time and we cannot get the concrete for the last two alleys. The last two alleys are gonna be pushed to the spring. They still are on the agenda to do, they're coming, it's just a little bit of delay. Other than that, everybody at City Hall continues to work hard. We're trying to address all public concerns and complaints we get regularly. Council and mayor bring us stuff regularly, try to address them, and everybody's working really hard. So that's all I have for today, nothing too specific. Oh, one last thing, the subcommittee, Mr. Mayor, for the ordinance subcommittee, can you just reaffirm who is on that currently, so that we can proceed with that? I know Councilman Samiri and Councilwoman Jakowski are...
I'm not there in the subcommittee.
For the councils, or for the ordinance?
Yeah, for the animals. Animal and animal. So it seems like the subcommittee...
Dissolved temporarily?
Yeah. I don't think we need it anymore. We can just discuss issues here. We don't need it. Yeah, so...
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to the public conference.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Lynn Blasi? Can you access under the agenda items, please?
Hello, I'm mayor and council. I'd like to start by thanking council for moving forward with the resolutions around the Joe Louis Greenway project, and I look forward to seeing continued work between the entities that work on that, Arts and Culture Commission, BDA, CED, CDI, and you all. And I also just wanted to say, reiterate the animal ordinance and encourage everyone who's watching in the community to follow the model of bringing new and edited language to the dissolved subcommittee, to council. You can email council, you can talk to the mayor, council, the city manager, but it's really effective to bring edited language so that they can work with that and work with the community to make edits and adjustments. So I just had to modify that a little bit, and happy holidays and thank you all.
Thank you, Lynn. Mr. Nasser Hussain, agenda items only, please, two minutes.
Concerning the appointment to the Warsaw Commission, I would recommend that whoever is reappointed, refill the application or summarize version. I checked today, a lot of people are overdue in their water bills, and some people, I think, that no longer living in Hamtramck, like from commission. As for the city manager, which was discussing the reports, I always criticize you people, but you have somebody who's already here, he knows the city, he knows the mosques, he knows the churches. He knows the police officers, he knows the employees, he knows anybody new. You get at least a year or two till they just familiarize themselves with the city of Hamtramck. So why do you keep wasting time on him? What you're doing is incompetence. Try him one year, two years, if you don't like it, then maybe in two years, you have more candidates who are willing if the city stays solvent. The waste of time is very, very bad. I think his qualify to do it. Don't waste the city resources waiting for candidates. You won't find nobody better than him. I say it because I have dealt with him. He comes to the mosque, he outreaches. When I was in the school board, he would come to the school board. You won't find anybody better than me next. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Uden, Fleming Street, two minutes, only on agenda items, please.
Assalamualaikum and very good evening. I just want to say thank you for Mr. Mayor and the city manager Max, because there was a hole in front of my house. I reported to the mayor and Mr. Khalil Rafi, they take very fast and prompt action. And I'm really grateful to you all. Mr. City Manager, here along with Mr. Nine, told me they busy after the temporary feeling. So I'm really grateful. And I had a request to the police authority. Some people park their cars...
I apologize, it has to only be on the agenda item.
We can talk to you after about it.
Yeah, I apologize, but thank you for your time. Mr. Araf Hasif?
Again, sorry.
Agenda item, please.
I would like just to...
Agenda item, please. I just had somebody sit down, I cannot have you get up and do the same thing. I apologize. You can say it as you're walking in your chair and I'll pretend you're off the podium.
Thank you, anyway, what an opportunity.
Thank you, thank you so much. Were you trying to recognize me?
No.
You can get back up, no, I'm just messing with you, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
So definitely our gatekeeper.
Mr. Mayor, drum roll, please, last and not least. Agenda items, please, sir.
I don't want to go over time, where's my phone?
Thank you.
So talking about the animal thing, I was just so impressed the way you handled that issue because that's the way to deal with a fine compromise. One of the most difficult things in life is to learn to live with someone you disagree with and work with someone to find a solution, because you're not gonna ever agree with everybody. You have to fight a compromise. It's the only way. And if we could have used that tactic on so many other things in the past in the city, we would be in a lot of trouble there. So in addition, falling off there, coming from that, I just want to say, think twice about these projects. I'm gonna put my critics hat now. Think about these projects we're talking about with the bicycles paths, dog parks, or whatever else is going on in life. This is not any other, this is Hamtramck, it's a unique city. It's totally different than Royal Oak or Birmingham, or what you want to make this look like, or as rich looking, or as cool looking, all that. We have such uniqueness here that we can deal with. These houses are close together, it's an old city, it's got history. It's got a long history, the different ethnic groups are here.
Don't sway too far.
Am I going too far?
No, you're going far off the agenda.
Oh, far off the agenda, okay, right. So the paths going down the alleys, I mean, we have alleys, they're very narrow. I mean, I hope you've all taken into consideration, garbage pickup trucks and other cars that have to drive down there. But I just want you to think twice when you vote on these things, because we know about the parking thing, we know about the... Okay, three good ideas I'll give you right now. One is we need a three-level parking garage behind...
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, sir. I know, I love the energy, I love the energy in the room today, such a vibe.
You could also put it in that survey.
There's so many things we need. There's so many things we need, we don't need bicycle paths, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, you guys make my job so easy. Mr. Mayor, that is all for public comment.
Thank you, move to adjourn.
My motion?
Second. All right, it's 9:11 PM.
And I'm assuming you all agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go Morocco.
Since Mr. Councilman Al Sumari did not recognize you, I'd like to recognize you.
Thank you, hold on, we're still rocking, keep going.
Recognize all that.
No, my friend, nobody can shake down.
Suspension!
Madam Klae, Lady, also, what's up?
This was good time, I only had four minutes.